Here.
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 Commissioner Kalanowski is excused. May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to announce that we did hold an executive session this evening regarding a litigation issue. So with that, we'll move right into our first agenda item. And I'd like to call on State Representative Madeline Dean. Is in attendance here this evening? Could you, right, could you just hold one second, please, State Representative? First, I'd like to call on Commissioner Dennis Sapon before we start with our first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a dedication of the baseball field closest to Cricket Avenue in Ardsley Park in memory of former Commissioner and Board President Martin Reddington.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, State Representative Madeline Dean.
Good evening, Mr. President, and good evening, Commissioners. It's an honor to be with you tonight. Good evening, everybody in the audience, most especially, good evening to the Martin Reddington family. It's a real honor and privilege for me to be here tonight. I will get through this, I'll be fine. Sure, I will. I say it's an honor because I have the privilege, as State Representative, to bring a citation from the House of Representatives to honor this dedication that will take place for the field in Ardsley, but more importantly, to honor the man, Marty Reddington. And if you don't mind, Mrs. Reddington, I will call him Marty, because that's the way he was. He wanted people to just be familiar. And he did that with me, a kid, back in the late 1970s, when I got interested in politics and local government. And I was a young committee woman, and I was working on campaigns. And Marty Reddington was such a role model then and throughout his life, as a man of positive spirit, always a smile on his face, an avid runner, which I really admire. I'm not a runner, I'm not an athlete, but somebody who just was so devoted to family and community. Is there any better thing to do? So I'll read just a bit of this citation from the House of Representatives and say that I'm honored to offer it to you and your family. The House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always pleased to acknowledge those individuals who, through their dedication and excellence, contribute to the well-being of their communities, and ultimately, to all people of this Commonwealth. Abington Township is honoring the life of Martin J. Reddington through the dedication of Ardsley Park Baseball Field. Martin Reddington dedicated his life to serving Abington community as a resident, a business owner, past president of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Born in Philadelphia in June of 1938, Mr. Reddington was a graduate of our Mother of Constellation Elementary School, St. John's High School, and LaSalle University. He was also a United States Air Force veteran. Mr. Reddington was devoted to his wife, Eileen, who joins us here tonight, a wife of 54 years, and proudly raised their six children, Monica, Lisa, Diane, Marty Jr., Kevin, Sheila, in their Ardsley home, many of whom, if not all of whom, are here tonight. Mr. Reddington was actively involved in his community, including three terms of public service right here, as Abington Township Ward Nine Commissioner. His work toward transparency in township affairs, specifically opening Commissioner meetings to the public, earned the respect of his colleagues, it certainly earned my respect, and the respect of Abington residents, and led to his two-time election as president of this very board. Mr. Reddington also served as the president of Rotary Club, of Abington Edge Hill. He founded the Abington Comic Club. He was a member of the Friendly Sons of St. John, and I, St. Patrick, excuse me, and I could go on and on. But I think I'll leave you with one thing that was really a guiding principle for him. Apparently, and I have the pleasure of working with Marty Reddington's niece, Kathleen Joyce, who's my colleague and my friend, and we have the honor of working together, she said one of Marty's favorite lines to his children or his nieces and nephews were, did you get your homework done? If they said, oh, yeah, yeah, he'd say, wonderful, read a chapter ahead. What good life advice. I don't always live up to it, but I'm going to try. It is with great honor that I offer this citation to you, Mrs. Eileen Reddington, and to your entire family. And I wish that maybe the whole family would stand up and be recognized at this time. Well, I'll be real quick, because I'm real nervous. Madeline, I wasn't expecting this. Thank you very much. And thank you so much, Commissioners, for this great honor for Marty. He loved Ardsley, he loved Abington Township, and although this is bittersweet, it's sweeter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, State Representative Madeline Dean. And now, Mrs. Reddington, we have some further or more accolades for Mr. Marty Reddington coming from your Commissioner, Commissioner Dennis Sapon.
Good evening, folks. I'm going to repeat a statement that I made the other night at our meeting. As a Commissioner of Ward Nine, it's an honor to be part of this process, which honors a lifelong member of the Ardsley community and family, a past Commissioner, and a President of the Board of Commissioners. I have known Marty, Diane, and Kevin for some time, and my grandchildren have benefited from the many Easter egg hunts that Marty and the Reddington family sponsored for the children of Ardsley and Glen Side. So with that, we're going to...
Present you with this plaque, Mrs. Reddington, that reads as follows. In commemoration and grateful acknowledgment of the historic and accomplished Ward Five Commissionership and Board Presidency of Martin J. Reddington, June 12, 1938, to May 24, 2015. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township proudly names, in his honor, Martin Reddington Field at Ardsley Park, today, July 9, 2015. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Dennis Sapon, I present this plaque to you. Okay, next, on our agenda, I call on Commissioner Michael Markman for the Robert W. Montgomery Award to Redeemer Valley Community Garden.
Thank you. The Redeemer Valley Community Garden is a really remarkable thing. They have 42 active members that grow vegetables and donate the vegetables to different charities. And in this day and age, to have 42 people come out and maintain a garden is an unbelievable thing, and they should be very, very proud of themselves and very deserving of this award. So I'm going to read from it. Redeemer Valley Community Garden, a community organization that has made an outstanding contribution in promoting, preserving, and protecting our community's natural environment. Redeemer Valley's dedication to growing organic food, making sustainable organic gardening available to the community, and educating the public about sustainable gardening practices exemplifies the spirit of the Environmental Leadership Award and serves an example for both residents and businesses in Abington Township. The Board of Commissioners, in the name of the entire township, shows its appreciation for your community involvement and dedication to the Abington Township by presenting you with the 2015 Robert W. Montgomery Junior Award. So if you'd come forward and accept the award, please.
Excuse me. President Luker.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Can I just ask, I don't know the location of that garden.
Could someone come up to the mic?
I think it's great, I just don't know the location. Oh, Redeemer, okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation for the World Championship Senior High Odyssey of the Mine Team. Now, I understand, we have a representative from State Senator Art Haywood's office here this evening. We also have a representative from Congressman Brendan Boyle's office here this evening. And we also have our own Commissioner Jimmy DePlacido here this evening. And also, State Representative Madeline Dean, who has the presentation. So if, I guess, whatever order you want to go in, you want to start with Commissioner Jimmy DePlacido, you want to take charge of this, sir?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Can I also ask for, instead of Commissioner Spiegelman, on this one?
To hold the plaques?
Yes, please. I got, I have notes here. And many other plaques. Can you hold all of them? Don't drop them. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, and members of Abington's staff and my fellow Commissioners, we are now in the presence of World Champions. Let's come on. I think most of them are over there right now, but I would like to introduce you to the Abington Senior High Odyssey of the Mine World Champions 2015. One more time. Before we get started handing out all the hardware and commendations, just give me a minute to explain what Odyssey of the Mine is. Odyssey of the Mine was created and founded by Dr. C. Samuel Nicholas, a professor at Rowan University in 1978. It is an international educational program that provides problem-solving opportunities for students from kindergarten to college. OM team members apply their creativity to solve problems that range from building mechanical devices and presenting their own interpretations of literary classics. At the world competition, teams from countries such as China, Canada, Germany, Japan face off and are scored for their long-term problem solutions, how well they solve spontaneous problem on the spot, and the style in which they elaborate their long-term solutions. What was the problem that you, the winning problem that you solved? What was the name of the problem? Can you help us out? Your name? All right, Max.
Yeah, it was called Pandora's Box. We had to tell our own interpretation of the story, it could take place in any time period, and it had to have like a video game kind of spin onto it, so, yeah. Yeah.
Very cool, very cool. All right. So, Abington Senior High School OM team took part in a five-day competition that, which was held at Michigan State University at the end of May of this year. And when they were done there, they returned home as World Champions. Unreal. Let me introduce each member of the OM team, and when I did, you're probably all standing up now, but just wave to the cameras and bow or curtsy or whatever. And also, I'd like to mention that each one of the members of this team was also graduated from Abington Senior High in the 10th percentile of the class. All right. First member, Chris Doyle. Rob Galloway. Andrew Jagary. Did I say that, did I say that right? Jagary? Don't worry about it, people butcher my name 25 times a day, don't worry about it. Thank you. Max Mendel. Tara Santoro. Gil Wimmerling. And Nick Fitzpatrick. Nick Fitzpatrick couldn't be with us tonight, he's currently touring the United States as a rock star, but we have somebody who accepts his commendation for him, and he was also a part of the team's support staff. Abington's own Mike Fitzpatrick. Sit down. And also a member of the support staff, Dave Mendel. And lastly, where would they be without their fearless leader, Coach Anna Mendel? All right, well, I'm going to pass the mic off to Commissioner Spiegelman to say a few or maybe 100 words, and lead the commendation for you.
Honestly, there's very little to add. You know, just remember, for everyone here, for everyone watching this, these, these are the young people that our schools are producing, these are the young people that our community's producing, we could not be prouder of them. And with that, you're each going to get a plaque that reads relatively similar to this. I'm going to read from the team plaque. Certificate of Commendation Presented to Odyssey of the Mine Team in recognition of the extraordinary accomplishment of winning the World Championship at the 2015 Odyssey of the Mine World Finals, Michigan State University, May 20th to 23rd, 2015. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township proudly presents this certificate of commendation to the exceptional Abington Senior High School Odyssey of the Mine Team, this day, July 9, 2015. Well done.
All right, just wait a minute, we've got a little bit of more hardware to go out. I would like to introduce State Representative Madeline Dean.
Thank you, Commissioner. Congratulations, team. And I won't repeat what the Commissioner told you, I'll just add a little level of detail that we learned, that the competition involved more than 1 million participants from the 50 states and 20 countries. A million participants, and we got the winners. That's pretty impressive. So, to its credit, Abington Senior High Odyssey of the Mine Team won first place with a score of 344.95, I don't even understand that score, under the expert guidance, and I'm going to bother to name you all again, and I think maybe you want to come on up here for a picture, under the expert guidance of Coach Anna Mendel, the team was comprised of Christopher Doyle, come on up, Nicholas Fitzpatrick, Robert Galloway, Andrew Jagary, Max Mendel, Tara Santoro, and Gilbert Wimmerling. Also providing assistance were Dave Mendel and Mike Fitzpatrick, if you're here, come on up. The House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Abington Senior High School Odyssey of the Mine Team upon its outstanding accomplishments and extends its best for continued success in future endeavors. I think we know they're going to be successful in the future, on behalf of the House.
All right, don't go anywhere. We also have a representative from Pennsylvania State Senator's office, Ms. Robin Beal, who would like to present something to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Unfortunately, Senator Haywood was not able to be here tonight due to a prior commitment, but he wanted to make sure that you all were very aware of how incredibly proud he is of your accomplishments, and as Jimmy has alluded, or John alluded, excuse me, that this is what's coming out of our community and our schools, it is just unbelievable. So we have issued senatorial certificates to each one of you, and I won't read them all, but I will give you an idea. The 4th Senatorial District of Pennsylvania is issuing a certificate of recognition. Let it be known that these members of the team, on this memorable occasion of achieving World Champion status in the 2015 Odyssey of the Mine Competition on the 23rd of May, 2015, is deserving of honor and recognition of this stellar level of accomplishment. Therefore, Senator Art Haywood of the 4th District of Pennsylvania extends his sincere congratulations and best wishes for success in the future, which, of course, as we know, you will all be doing quite well. We also have certificates recognizing the mentorship of the leaders and the coaching, and again, Senator Haywood is unbelievably proud of each and every one of you and offers his sincere congratulations.
All right, one more to go. Representing Congressman Brendan Boyle is our own Anthony Luker.
Good evening, everyone. The ingenuity that we have assembled here today with this group of students, students from a school that I am proud to call my alma mater, Abington Senior High School, your accomplishment as the 2015 Odyssey of the Mine World Champions is nothing short of remarkable. Such a recognition on a world stage is so well-deserved by a low-class group of young people, to yourself. Your creativity, or as I like to sometimes reference it, ability to think outside the box, resourcefulness, and ability to problem solve is extraordinary, especially in an era where technology oftentimes, oftentimes is used to replace logic. It is with great honor that I stand before you today to present these congressional citations on behalf of Congressman Brendan F. Boyle, representing Pennsylvania's 13th Congressional District. So again, I will just read one citation, but I also, well, I'm sorry, I take that back, I will read two citations, because I also have hardware for the supporting cast, okay? So, for those citations that are being given to the students, certificate of special congressional recognition presented for excellence as Odyssey of the Mine World Champions for 2015, dated July 9, 2015, signed by Brendan F. Boyle, Member of Congress. Congratulations. And for the teachers and parents, certificate of special congressional recognition presented for invaluable service to the community, dated July 9, 2015, signed by Brendan F. Boyle, Member of Congress. Congratulations.
All right, one more thing. Let's hear from the coach. Anna?
Well, this was just so much fun. We never, we felt like we had accolades enough, just going to the competition and having a blast. I mean, we thought that was it, right, guys? I accept very little acknowledgement, because this is the most motivated, creative group of kids. I really sat back and just facilitated, and it was a little bit of a liaison, a little bit of, you know, helped them rehearse at the end, but it really came all from them. I've never had such a pleasure working with a group of kids. They're fun, they're respectful, they're wonderful to be around. I mean, I know that, I'm not worried about them doing great things, I know they're good people, and that's what I know about them.
All right, one more time for the World Champions, Odyssey of the Mine.
Again, a special thanks to the members of the World Champions Senior High Odyssey of the Mine Team, and also our thanks to Congressman Brendan Boyle's office, State Senator Art Haywood's office, and State Representative Madeline Dean. Robin Beal, Representative, State Senator Art Haywood's office, Anthony Luker, Representative, Congressman Brendan Boyle's office, and Madeline Dean, representing Madeline Dean. We'll just take a brief recess while we have an exit from our meeting, at which time, at which time we'll continue with our formal business. Okay, at this time, we'll continue with our regular business. At this time, I'd like to call on approval of the minutes, and I pass it on to Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes from our meeting on June 11, 2015, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we move to our Public Works Committee Agenda and call on Commissioner Thomas Bowman, Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works, PW1's been deleted, we'll go on to PW2. And this is for professional services. The EPA's Whistaken Creek TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load. This is a motion to authorize the participation and equal sharing of consultants' fees associated with hiring John Hall Associates to evaluate and prepare a response to EPA's proposed total phosphorus limit of 0.04 for the Whistaken Creek watershed area, including the Sandy Run Creek in Abington Township, in an amount not to exceed $10,000, to be funded from sewer operating retained earnings, and I so move.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW3, this is the final payment for contract number 144, Structural Mechanical. This is a motion to authorize the payment of $36,972.50 to Eastern Environmental Contractors, Inc., as final payment for the centrifuge installation contract to be funded from account number 020000007449, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PW4, this is the final payment for contract number 145, Electrical. It's a motion to authorize the payment of $10,627 to AJM Electric, Inc., as final payment for the centrifuge installation contract to be funded from account number 02000007449, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PW5 is the emergency repair storm sewer system in the 900 block of Rital Road and Pembren Park Pool House. This is a motion to approve the Engineering Department to hire a contractor to repair the large elliptical metal pipe in the 900 block of Rital Road and the inlet end pipe in front of Pembren Park Pool Pump House at a cost not to exceed $28,350, to be funded from surplus funds from the 2014 bond issue, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PW6, this is the purchase of two chassis, chassis, for automated trash truck. It's a motion to purchase two chassis to be used for the automated side loaders at a cost of $243,000. The funds for these chassis to be drawn from refuse fund balance, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And PW7, this is expanding our current overlay program. Motion to expend $180,000 to mill various streets in Abington Township with funds to be drawn from Permanent Improvement Fund, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address and a three-minute speaking time, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. The chart that I sent to Commissioner Hecker, I was hoping to get some answers for. I said I could then explain things very cogently. I'll just read you down what we have from our budget, starting in 2006, it was 10.8, then 11 in 2008. Okay, we went down to 8 in 2012. We went down to 4 miles from, in our budget, 2013. And in 2014, Mr. Michelot has 6, and I think it was 3 and 3. 3 budgeted, and then 3 more came from fund balance. I'm not sure on that one. In 2015, we budgeted 4 miles. Explaining why our roads are so bad. Now, we've added the Aqua component, the Aqua PA. The Aqua PA component is, when Aqua digs up the street, it doesn't go pick a street to dig up that's the most deteriorated street and the one most in need of paving. It does the one most in need of piping. Okay? So sometimes that doesn't equate to what you need in order to make a round in your township. Same thing with Pico, and I think same thing with the engineering. So, we're falsely calculating when we do that. And I think the chart that I put together, which I am hoping to finish, and I will email to all of you, is very clear why our roads are in the condition that they're in. And I hope this year at budget time, we get back up to what we need to get to. It's pretty clear to me that what we're doing is cheaping up on the roads, putting more in the fund balance from the same amount of taxes taken, and then from the fund balance, you can spend it however you want to. We need it on our necessities first, and then the other things come after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, question or reply?
Thank you. I would just advise all residents that are watching this to try to watch the committee meetings. This was thoroughly explained during Mr. Michelot's presentation and the question and answers by the Commissioners towards the Director of Public Works, so that you could get a full understanding of what the situation is instead of the comments by the Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman?
That concludes our business, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
We have to vote.
Sorry, we didn't vote on this one?
No.
Sorry about that.
We did get comments from one resident. Any other comments for residents?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes our business, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll move on to code enforcement and land development and call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1, Ordinance Number 2097, Ordinance Enacting Chapter 126, Real Estate Registry Vacant Properties. This is a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2097, Enacting Chapter 126, Real Estate Registry Vacant Properties, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from, any residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Next, we have CE2, Ordinance Number 2098, Ordinance Enacting Chapter 49, Vacant Property Review Board. This is a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2098, Enacting Chapter 49, Vacant Property Review Board, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address and three minutes, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I just want to add another component here for people to think about, because quite a few years back, maybe seven or eight years back, Mr. Lahaza was in the process of putting together a real estate registry at taxpayer expense, building a really Realtor site, competing with the Realtors in the township, and having all of the ability with all the township records and public resources to put together kind of the best site that there was, and no guard on the funds. You didn't have to make a profit to, you know, account for them. That, to me, was unbelievable, because these Realtors actually worked to be the first one to attract. They put ads out to attract clients. When they come through the township, then the township can decide who they get parsed off to. So, that was not a good idea. Also, I've watched with the foreclosures that various public or government entities, you know, are encouraging people rather than setting up laws that make the people, the banks and the people that are handling these foreclosures follow the law. And one law, for example, is how they keep their properties, and those laws could be strengthened. We instead are allowing the banks to really cheat the people who own the properties and then parse these parcels out to people, often bundled in packages, very cheap, and somebody makes a big profit off of it on the backs of the person who lost their house. In this particular case, what I don't like is the vacant registry gives the township immediate access, okay? I understand the problems that you're trying to solve, but the way to solve them is to have very strong laws about how our buildings are kept and to enforce them, so that only the bad players, okay, so somebody who has a vacant property doesn't immediately have to register it and kind of have it acquired in your purview first, okay? That is really the right way to do it. If you have properties that have become blighted, put the laws so strong that the blighted properties have to get fixed. We have one, for instance, in the Switchville Tavern, the old Switchville Tavern. Been sitting there forever, and we just discussed at the last meeting that there are laws currently to deal with the blighted properties. They're a little bit obtuse. We'll fix those laws and deal with only the properties that are blighted. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could respond to that real quickly. We had a discussion about this in Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority this week, and I guess in practice in other municipalities, 95% of the time, these ordinances get people to fix up their properties. They never go on the vacant property, they never go actually get foreclosed or taken, or basically it does exactly that. It gets people to fix up their properties. So, in practice, that's what effectively it will do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Sharper?
Yes, since Mr. Lahaza is no longer employee here and is not here, I just want to add that his putting things on the website was not taking business away from Realtors, that he was sending, he was as a courtesy to them, listing those properties that were vacant, and then he would send the business to them. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
CE3, Resolution Number 15024, Transfer of Liquor License Number R19572, Orland Associates 2, LLC, Bernie's Restaurant, 391 Highland Avenue. This is a motion to advertise the public hearing on Resolution Number 15024, scheduled for 7:30 PM on Thursday, August 13, 2015, in the second floor boardroom of the Abington Township Administration Building, located at 1176 Old York Road, Abington, PA, 19001, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
CE4, Court of Common Pleas of Montgomery County, Docket Number 201505079, Greater Glenside Civic Association versus Abington Township Board of Commissioners and Duke Real Estate Partners, Incorporated. This is a motion to approve the settlement order, Docket Number 201505079, between the Greater Glenside Civic Association, Incorporated, Abington Township Board of Commissioners, and Duke Real Estate Partners, LLC, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
President Lucre?
Commissioner Farron?
Thank you, President Lucre. I just want to let the board and the public know, I had a chance to speak to some representatives from the Civic Association who I think are going to be speaking here tonight. I had a chance to speak to the property owner, and it seems to be an amenable solution for where we are. I won't speak for the Civic Association, but this seems to be in a good situation and at a point where we can move forward. So, I want to thank the Civic Association, I want to thank the property owner, I want to thank the court, and I want to thank the other Commissioners for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address and, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Who wants to go first?
She's up already.
Okay, all right. Name and address and three minutes, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Just wanted to ask if you can explain what for the people of the township, what the resolution was that you're approving?
Okay. Counsel, could you explain that, sir?
Certainly. There was a settlement conference held approximately two weeks ago, at which time the attorneys representing the Civic Association and Duke Real Estate Partners agreed to an order that will be entered by Judge Del Richie if the Board approves it this evening. Essentially, it sets certain guidelines where if there is a change in use of the proposed restaurant, that it would have to come back to the Board of Commissioners for a new conditional use hearing. In addition, if there was any significant reallocation of space within the restaurant, that that too would have to come back before the Board of Commissioners for another conditional use hearing. And it also resolves the issue of standing of the Greater Glenside Civic Association or any successor association to be a party in any of those conditional use hearings. This is essentially an agreement between the Civic Association and the owners of the property. It impacts the township very little unless there is a change in use, then it will have to come back for another hearing in front of all of us.
That explains it. I saw two hands. Come to the podium, please. Name and address, and you have three minutes for speaking. Time allotment?
My name is Kathleen Heron, 2034, Wharton Road, Glenside, just up the street from the proposed Bernie's. I'd like to read a statement from Robert Ayer, who's also a member of the Glenside Civic Association. He's the president and was unable to be here tonight. Dear Commissioners, for the record, I, Rob Ayer, am a resident of Abington Township at 2168 Kenmore Avenue, Glenside, about a quarter mile from the Switchville Crossing property where the development of Bernie's Restaurant is proposed. I am also president of the Greater Glenside Civic Association and represented the Civic Association and other individuals in the appeal of the Commissioners' decision to approve the conditional use application of Duke concerning the development of Bernie's on the site. I'm sorry I'm not able to attend this evening's meeting, but I am in Concord, New Hampshire, all week on another important matter. I've asked Kate Heron, a Civic Association member, to read this statement for me at the meeting as public comment. I want to be clear that this statement is my own and not given on behalf of my clients. In litigation being settled, my work as an attorney for the Civic Association and the other appellants before the Court of Common Please in negotiating the order to be considered tonight was done through correspondence and communications with your counsel in the case, Mr. Clark, and Duke's counsel, Mr. Jonas. If there's anything more for me to say or do as counsel, that will similarly be done in communication with them and the court, not at this meeting or through this statement. This statement is offered by me as a citizen and resident of Abington and a member and president of the Civic Association. I wish I could say that I was pleased with the result of the proceedings before the court or the resolution to be approved tonight, but that would be dishonest. I am not, and I think it is fair to say, that a solid majority of the Board remain deeply disappointed with the sport's actions and concerned about the potential impact of the decisions it made for the life of residents in the neighboring community. I and many of my colleagues and neighbors remain unhappy with what happened here. Candidly, those concerns were not shared as broadly as the concerns about the proposal of Duke eight years ago to put a supermarket on this site. There are many reasons for that, I think, including our own failing as a civic association to stay active and engaged before this Board in recent years, and the fact that the impact of this proposal to put a restaurant on this corner was a more localized concern than the supermarket proposal. I also think the broader neighborhood was seduced by the developers' pretty pictures and representations about the kind of restaurant that was under consideration, and did not think enough about important details such as, how do we know those promises will be kept, or broader and longer-term issues like, what happens if this Bernie's experiment fails? What goes in there next? We express our concerns about the potential for adverse impacts on the neighborhood should this family-style restaurant become something else, like a late-night drinking hole or bar. We sought reasonable and objective restrictions to protect the neighborhood, like closing at midnight on Sunday through Thursday nights, but a slim majority of you refused to even consider such things, assuring us that the quote-unquote "family-style restaurant" and other restrictions would be enough. We also expressed our concerns about the process used by this Board to make these decisions. Two objections were believed to be particularly compelling. First, we told you at the beginning, in the middle, and at the end that it was wrong to process the conditional use application under an ordinance that had not yet been passed.
Excuse me, ma'am. Are you getting close to the end? Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
You can make copies and give them to the township manager if necessary, if you have much more to go. If not, just wrap it up, please.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Had you insisted that developer produce an actual needs assessment and community impact study to provide at least a starting point for real objective analysis of whether a restaurant of this sort was needed, what the market was, and whether it was likely to succeed financially, we might not be wondering still tonight, how confident are we that this restaurant can succeed here and what happens next if it doesn't. We hope it succeeds, and part of the motivation for settling at this time and in this way was to let it move forward properly and without the burden of further litigation or restrictions. But in doing so, we are trusting you, the Commissioners, who made the choice to use this ordinance without ours restrictions. We're trusting to make sure that language "family-style restaurant" is enforced. We're trusting you to assure that this restaurant succeeds as it was represented in the pretty pictures and stories who were told of an upscale family restaurant that will enhance the life of the community and not a bar or late-night hub of activity in an otherwise quiet neighborhood of working families with young children. And if it does not succeed, or if this developer comes back to you again and asks you to change the plan or the law of this township to allow them to do something different, we hope you will listen to us, because so far, we have been right. Thank you. I and the Civic Association Board really do hope this works, and we look forward to working with you, Duke, and Bernie's to make it work for us all.
Thank you.
That concludes Mr. Ayer's statement. I feel similarly, and I believe my neighbor, Kim Martin-
Yes.
Thank you.
Name and address for him in three minutes, please.
Kimberly Martin, 2067 Kenmore Avenue. I just wanted to make the first point that the reason that we reached this settlement is that we are making it in reliance on the assurances that the Commissioners will enforce the ordinance language that you chose to maintain the family-style character of this restaurant and to protect the neighborhood. I'd like to go on the record saying that the Civic Association expressed our concerns about the potential for the adverse effects on our neighborhood. We sought to impose reasonable and objective restrictions to protect our neighborhood, like closing at midnight Sunday through Thursday, but the majority of the Commissioners refused to put any conditions on this restaurant. We are hoping that this restaurant does succeed, but we do want you to know that you've allowed this to go by telling us that the wording of "family-style restaurant" will be enough to protect us. And so, we're hoping that you make sure that that happens. As you everybody knows, the ShopRite was a miserable disaster, and the bank that was proposed by the developers has also not been done. The third option was the Medical Office Building that was proposed by the developers. That's still not happening at this point. I don't want to be here again in a couple months, because now the developer comes back to us a third time and says, we were wrong and we can't make this happen, and you all agree to change the language of our laws again to allow them to propose something and to do something. Because we made an agreement eight years ago, that agreement didn't happen. We made an agreement now, and we're hoping that because we made this agreement again for the second time before- for the second time before all of you, that you will make sure that this agreement is held. Everyone has copies of the agreement, and Mr. Ayer's statement kind of sums up all of our points, but we are concerned that if this restaurant fails, what will happen? And we're hoping that the family-style restaurant concept is maintained, and that if Bernie's does fail, that some other similar restaurant then with that same family-style idea goes in there. And that if this does fail, that you as commissioners will encourage the developer to speak with the Civic Association again, and we've even talked to Commissioner Farron about maybe having some ongoing discussions, just as monitoring how things are going, so that the Civic Association can be involved with the developer, how things are going, and monitor the process. And not that those restrictions were put on you, but just that you'd be willing to work with us so that we can continue to have some successful dialogue for this property. And that going forward, like I said, we're trusting that since you allowed this to happen, that you'll make sure that the ordinance of that family-style restaurant does actually have meaning and definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the business of the Code Enforcement and Land Development Committee this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, we go to public safety and turn it to Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
Thank you, President Lucker. PS one is a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and one, amending chapter one fifty-six, vehicles and traffic, article three, parking regulations, section twenty-five, parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here at a corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, and section twenty-eight, special purpose parking zones, and ISO move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Oh, sir? Come to the podium, name and address, and you have three minutes to speak on your concern.
Greg Koglinski, ten sixty-eight Huntington Pike. I noticed that you're talking about an ordinance to enforce no parking. I've lived in the Abington Township for approximately five years. I didn't see any code enforcement on a neighboring street off of Huntington Pike. It causes a number of problems. I have grandchildren to come over. People completely ignore the signs.
Excuse me one second, sir. Larry, can you ascertain whether what Mr. Koglinski is speaking or pertains to, is this relative to this ordinance?
Isn't this throughout the township? Is it through, is this throughout the township, sir?
These are particular no-parking signs that have been asked for, or no-parking here at a corner. There's certain streets that have been...
Yes, well, what I'm referring to is one that's never enforced. Okay.
One that's existing. It's not one of the ones in this ordinance, though.
I don't know. I wouldn't know.
It's not a new sign that you're referring to, sir?
No, it's not a new one.
Okay.
Why don't...
That would be the end of the meeting.
Okay. Why don't you, in all due fairness, why don't you wait till the conclusion of our agenda items?
Absolutely.
And if need be, we may have to have you give your name and telephone number to Chief Kelly and speak on this after the meeting.
Yeah, I tried that already.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you. All right, continue. Were you finished reading? Okay, yeah. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes.
PS two is a motion to advertise ordinance number three thousand and two, amending chapter one fifty-six, vehicles and traffic, article three, parking regulations, section twenty-five, parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here at a corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on August thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty, and ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes.
PS three is a motion to appoint candidate Adrian McMenamin from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act one twenty Training. Appointments will be effective September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Just like to say that Adrian McMenamin is a resident of Abington, also a resident of wonderful Ward Three, somebody that's a great individual, and I appreciate that he has come through the committee, would also ask for the support of our commissioners in supporting this as well.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes.
PS four is a motion to appoint candidate Mark Lang from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act one twenty Training. Appointment will be effective September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from, any residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, we move to Public Affairs. I'm sorry?
I have one minute. I'm worried if I lose power, I don't want to lose everything but power.
Yeah.
We'll take a one-minute recess.
Thank you. Looks like, okay. All right, so we're back in session, and at this time, we'll go to Public Affairs and call on Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, we have four items on the Public Affairs agenda, and with your permission, after the reading, the motion seconding of PA one, I'd like to turn things over to Manager LaFever for some comments with your permission?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we will start with PA one. This is resolution number fifteen dash zero two-three, annual action plan, five-year consolidated plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and the citizen participation plan for the use of federal CDBG funds. This is a motion to adopt resolution number fifteen dash zero two-three, approving Abington Township's five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and the citizen participation plan for the use of federal community development block grant CDBG funds, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners?
If Manager LaFever...
Okay, before we go into that, Township Manager Michael LaFever.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of this motion is the approval of the annual action plan and the actual use of the community development block grant funding for the next calendar or fiscal year. The plan of the budget presented to the committee last week has been revised at the recommendation of staff. After reviewing the proposals, staff is recommending that the one project, the Stormwater Project with Westbury, be removed from consideration, instead be replaced with a curving sidewalks and stormwater project on the twenty-seven hundred block of Old Welsh Road in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars for lighting in Grove Park, and additional ten thousand dollars for home improvements. You may also recall, at our meeting last week, a request was made by representatives of the Crestmont Community Center Committee for funding for their project. We're not in a position to recommend approval for those funds at this time, but staff has indicated willingness to work with the committee, provide technical assistance, so they can accomplish the same goals they hope to acquire through the funding request, basically the development of feasibility plan for the project, so the committee's in a position to come before the board for consideration in future funding cycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager LaFever.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address and three minutes, please.
I had to revise my three minutes. I had to tone it down a little bit. Louise Twiman, sixteen seventy-two Franklin Avenue, Willow Grove, Pennsylvania. Now, the more I talk to the older residents of Ward Five, as I continue to get petitions signed, I'm convinced we are and have been underserved and ignored in so many ways. Okay? But it's a new day, because we're ready to try to get to the bottom of these problems. Now, after the concept of building a PAL center at Crestmont Park was adopted by the Township Board on May the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, we were actually shocked and angry and all, you'd just be surprised, it was like shock and awe, okay? To feel that you were going to build a PAL center at Crestmont Park. So in desperation, we sought to get information. We asked questions. We went to the library. We solicited help from persons we thought could possibly help us, because somebody's got to help these concerned citizens. And we will continue to seek help from any person or government entity possible. Okay? We have a community multicultural center committee, and we plan to stay on this for a while. We in Ward Five never receive any communications from our representative, making known various and interesting and helpful up-to-date projects available for its residents. For instance, different grants that are available, these things that people had put in for like two years ago, and we're just hearing about it now, so we have to kind of scramble to try to get something in, hoping that you will approve it. Okay? So, but I do believe, after Mr. LaFever called me today, I believe the township will be able to find money in the budget to help build a community center. But now, the way this CDBG fund money is distributed is unacceptable, okay? Because I attended the May the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting. We discussed things like shelter for abused women, aid to the elderly, household maintenance, small jobs for the unemployed, and of course, help for a community center. Now, how the takeaway ended up with street curbs and sewer lines for the wealthy neighborhoods, and then a hundred and fifty-three thousand for a project that's already slated to receive seventeen million dollars? Oh, that just bothers my mind. It really does.
Okay, Mrs. Twiman.
We need transparency with that whole project. Yes, sir.
Okay, in all due respect, you're going past your three minutes.
Okay. And we would like to know where every dollar is spent with that also, with that project also. And finally, I wish that the Sussman Business that is located in Ward Five would have been told that Ward Five residents could use some of their help, as well as other places they are willing to find there. So it's such a suggestion. A plan of action is for Abington Township to supply the land, the architecture, and the project manager, who by the way, is already on your payroll, build a much-needed community center. And in the meantime, the Willow Grove Civic Association will partner with CADCOM to fundraise and to seek grants to help sustain the operation and the necessary activities of the center. Ward Five is the forgotten and neglected ward in Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Yes. I'll take on next.
Oh, Margaret Bing, you signed up?
Yes.
Name and address and three minutes, please.
Margaret Penderbing, Crestmont, Abington Township, Willow Grove Post Office.
Excuse me. Does someone have a cell phone ringing?
Got to turn that off.
If you could kindly turn that off, please?
It's gone.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do my minutes now start again? I really came tonight, and I felt this was under Public Affairs, historical event happened today in the United States, in the state of South Carolina. The Confederate flag will be taken down tomorrow. The governor and the granddaughter of Thomas Jefferson made a plea that we, as all people, get along. I think it fits here, because as I look around, I don't see commissioners, I see individuals. I went to school with Mrs. Gillespie's husband. Mr. Jones went to Dr. King's College, Morehouse in Atlanta. He was always taught peace. Miss Schreiber will tell you that I worked very hard for the gay and lesbian ordinance to be passed. Mrs. Meyer's husband, I've worked with him in terms of my parents, who sometimes had too much liquor in his edifice. These are things that make a community. We have not been transparent, either by design or accident, and I hope whatever we decide, that is decided as a community and not a board. It has to have input. Chief Kelly will tell you, I worked with them on that committee when the first discussion came up about PAL. We have got to be clear, we have to be fair, and we have to be honest. Abington, we were taught by those young people, we're first in the alphabet, we're first in academics, and we're first in achievement. And if you graduated from Abington High, you heard that. So let's decide what's going to save us as a community called Abington Township and be real clear. I do not take a position, because I'm seventy-seven years old, I think young people have to be involved to the commitment, because you and I will not be on the ground to finish the project. Commissioners, staff people, and community, thank you for your attention. How many minutes did I use?
Two and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very efficient, Mrs. Bing. Any other comments from the residents? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, and three minutes, if you will.
Tyree Green, sixteen fifty-eight Washington Avenue.
Right, sir.
I'm fourteen-year-old, and I go to Abington Junior High School. I want a community center because the YMCA most people can't afford, and a community center would keep us off the streets. It would be at Crestmont Park. We could play basketball inside on railroads and possibly have a basketball team.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? Name and address and three minutes, please.
I'm Sean Harris. I'm Sean Harris. I live on sixteen forty-six Franklin Avenue. I want a rec center, because it gives us stuff to do, keep us off the streets, and for our jobs, people. That's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other comments from residents? Name and address, sir.
My name is Byron Durham, twenty-two, twenty-three, Eastern and Fourteenth Lane. I'm here on behalf of the Crestmont Community Center to help build a recreation center for kids to play in a safe environment, and to help each other and learn how to play sports and everything, and to make new friends.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, sir, and three minutes.
Hello. Hello. My name is Brandon Lee, and fifteen sixty-eight Osborne Avenue. My name is Brandon Lee. I feel like we need a community center place in Crestmont where kids can come and express their feelings and come to have fun. It will also open up jobs for young adults and help young men and ladies do better for theirs, better for themselves.
Robert Long, sixteen seventy-two Franklin Avenue. I live right across the street from the Crestmont Park, and I noticed the young, Rubicon Park, I'm sorry, which my mother helped to put it together, but I see the young, young people running out of the park, and it seems like they have nowhere to go, and that's where the, you know, the hustling and all that. So why would you not have a community center that would give them something to look forward to? Because it seems like that's where they flock to, that area. So I think we should consider them, and I'm glad that they can.
Name and address, please, and three minutes also.
Donna Brewer, sixteen forty-four Arnold Avenue. We met with Mr. Van Strether's yesterday, who brought along with... We met with Mr. Van Strether yesterday, who brought along with him, a gentleman I like to call Godfather, and, um, Mr. Matteo, and I was really hoping against all odds that this staff and this board would have really considered doing the right thing with that HUD, federal low-to-moderate-income purpose grant that you received, and at least given some portion of it to this low-income community this round. That was the right thing to do. I'm very disappointed, I'm even grieved of the decision, the final decision. Now, I know how to play fifty-two fake-out, make it look like, oh, well, it was this person's fault, and it was this, and it wasn't vetted, and it wasn't timed, and let's keep it real. You took low-income money, money that was intended for low-income, low-to-moderate-income people, and put it in wealthy areas. To me, it's criminal. And then, you didn't even consider us. We did what we were asked, we gave you a proposal, we put it in writing, you didn't even consider us. It was all a big waste of time, a big fake-out. I'm extremely disappointed. You showed us you're able to make changes, you took Westbury off, that rich section off, you put the twenty-seven-hundred-block of Old West Road on. If I was a betting woman, I would bet that's in Ward Five. I don't know, but if I was a betting woman, that's what I would bet, where the low income is. Whether it is or not, it doesn't matter. This community has been disenfranchised for far too long. We have no one on this board representing Ward Five, and no one on this staff representing Ward Five, and it grieves me to no end. This is a new day, and I believe the Department of Justice should know about what you have done with this HUD grant. It breaks my heart and my spirit to know we're given a chance to ask for something that we rightfully do. How long you been getting HUD money and using it with Township Services, Mr. Solicitor? How long? And how long will this go on? The low-income residents continually overlooked and ignored it. It's criminal.
Before they go on, can I ask you a question?
Vice President Klein.
Yeah, have we, Michael or Michael LaFever or Michael, have we reviewed all the HUD requirements, or HUD requests in the one-year consolidated?
Yes, we have. All the, all the projects, the capital projects, including the program, are in specific areas approved for funding by the federal government. We don't designate which areas qualify for, for funding, that's determined by the federal government, so any project that's proposed, including this fiscal funding cycle, is in areas already approved by the federal government for funding.
So, these meet the requirements for the CDBG money?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and, and can we, can we, can you do me a favor? Can we give the information for the county district attorney's office, or the United States Department of Justice, to the last speaker, so that she can actually make a contact, make a contact if she feels that it's necessary to bring some charges, or have some charges investigated against the Township for our process going through the CDBG proposals?
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
That's not necessary.
Well, you made the accusation, so I think you should follow it up.
Now, you're putting on a show, that's not necessary.
Okay, excuse me, Speaker, name and address in three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, I'm glad to be here, and like every, excuse me, like everyone said, in Ward Five, we're very disappointed in you people, but we thank you for listening, but I think we're gonna, we, well, I'm not gonna say, but you've wasted our time, you really have. I think you have tolerated and listened to us and given us nothing. Like she said, we've done what you've asked, and it's like follow the leader, uh, seek, go seek and hide, smoke and mirrors, nothing makes any sense to Ward Five. You seem to forget, the President of the United States was a community leader, he obviously worked at a community center. Where is he now? The President of the United States. He is the one that just wanna answer our call, because you have failed tremendously. And I look at you, and I'm very disappointed, but I'm hoping you will listen to Ward Five, because now you will, because, I'm, I'm, I'm not threatening, I'm gonna wrap it up, but I had some interesting news yesterday, we went to Mr. Van, it was hopeful, but we never expected this. So, today, I heard some information, and concerning the Fair Housing Act, which was passed in nineteen sixty-eight, which barred outright racial discrimination, that was then routine, it also required government to go one step further to actively dismantle, uh, uh, neglected, I'm, I'm sorry, dismantle segregation and foster integration in its place. A mandate that for decades, decades, that has been largely forgotten, neglected, and unenforced. So, on Wednesday, the Obama administration announced a long-awaited rules designed to repair the law, unfulfilled promise, and promote the kind of racially-integrated neighborhoods that have long eluded segregated towns. The new rules require cities and towns all over the country to scrutinize their housing patterns for racial bias, and to publicly report every three to five years the results. Communities will also have to set goals, which will be tracked over time, and, and, I'm sorry, for how they will further reduce segregation.
And Mr. Vaughn, are you?
Uh, one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think you're equipped to make, well, your decision, but I don't think you truly understand segregation. Um, and I hope before you submit this, that you look at the new rule that is in effect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? If you've already spoken, say you're not allowed to speak a second time. Did you speak already?
Right. Doesn't matter.
Right, but that, that's all right, procedure says, once you, even if you haven't used your three minutes, you can't.
Okay, you don't wanna be arguing.
Okay, any other, any other residents who have not spoken as yet? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
All right, Mr. President, we're gonna continue with PA two. This is Resolution Number fifteen dash zero-two-five, Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund Program. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number fifteen dash zero-two-five, approving Abington Township to submit an application to the Department of Community Economic Development for the Multimodal Transportation Fund Program. The grant submission will support the Old York Road, Susquehanna Road, and project, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Moving on to PA three. This is Economic Development Traffic Planning and Design Agreed, Incorporated Agreement. This is a motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement from Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated, TPD, in the amount not to exceed seventy-nine-hundred dollars to be used from contingency funds, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
And, Mr. President, item PA four was very deftly handled by Commissioner Zappone, and item PA five has been deleted, so that concludes our public affairs agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, I turn it over to Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on Township Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the treasurer's report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein, and good evening, everyone. I'm gonna report first on the amount of monies that were deposited from the various departments into Republic Bank for the month of June. We deposited a total of eight ninety-seven, six ninety-three, which was an increase of the prior year of fifty-eight thousand, five sixteen. Year-to-date, we're also ahead, we collected ten million, seven forty-five, eight oh seven, as opposed to ten million, two sixty-six, seven six zero. Year-to-date, an increase of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, zero four seven. And moving on to a good month, we had a good month in collecting real estate taxes. We brought in twenty-six, the two million, six ninety-two, eight six two, which was an increase over June of two thousand and fourteen of nine hundred and eight thousand, seven thirty. Year-to-date, we're at ninety-six percent, twenty-five million, three sixty, six seven zero, with a balance of nine eighty-seven, one ninety-four, which is four percent of our amount due that needs to be collected by the end of the year. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC one, motion to A, approve the May expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of three million, five hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, and salaries and wages in the amount of two million, six hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of August, two thousand and fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? I'm sorry, any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Yes.
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 FC two, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for May, two thousand and fifteen, as previously circulated to the board. Advance in travel expense reports were zero dollars and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-six cents, respectively. Five-month expense total, two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventeen cents, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
FC three, motion to approve the clearing fund and deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of May, as previously circulated to the board. May petty cash balances previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the month of May, two thousand and fifteen, were eighteen thousand dollars and sixty-eight, eighteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and zero cents, and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and dispersments for the month of May, two thousand and fifteen, were fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents, and seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
President Luker, that concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Now, I call on Commissioner Tom Hacker, Director of the Pension Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Pension Committee has one item of business tonight, that's PENS one, Resolution Number fifteen dash zero-two-one, Amendment to Article Four, Section Four dash zero-three, Abington Township Police Pension Plan, and this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number fifteen dash zero-two-one, amending the police pension plan document for disability benefits, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. All right, that concludes our formal agenda for this evening. I'm looking to see who signed up, and I believe Edith Schmidt, is it still here? Yes, you wanted to, you signed up for an item? Yes, name and address, and three minutes, please.
Um, basically, it's Edith Schmidt, I didn't know it was not up for a vote tonight, so I'm good.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right.
And I think that takes care of everyone who signed up on the agenda, signed up on the signing sheets. So, if that concludes that, anyone else in the public who has a public comment? Name and address in three minutes, please.
Laura Lehman, thirteen thirty-one Bryant Lane. I wanna start with the comment about Mr. Lahaza creating a courtesy.
Mrs. Lehman?
Yep.
Could we not get into a name? Is there a specific topic?
Okay, so, I wanna get into the idea that creating the, whoever created it, creating the real estate site for the township was a courtesy. Of course, if I owned a building, I'd consider it a great courtesy, okay? Because the people owning the building just wanna get it out to as many people as possible. But as I said before, that public money competing with the realtors, who would like to have these people come in to their offices, does the businesses a disservice. It undercuts the business and uses public funds to do it. And if, if any commissioner would like to understand more about that, you need only ask me, and I'd be glad to spend the time. Unfortunately, the time usually is not offered from the other side, okay? The comment that was made by Commissioner Klein, and I'm gonna mention the name, against me, was a personal attack that you allowed, and you did not admonish him. You didn't admonish him. When I finished speaking, he said, the speaker pretty much equivalent of, the speaker doesn't know what she's talking about, okay? That is obnoxious and should not be allowed.
Can we move on to the next subject, Mrs. Lehman?
Well, I'd like to move on to it when you agree not to allow it. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Let's have the same behavior on that side of the dais. Thank you.
Correct.
All right, and the, the schedule, as, as was pointed out tonight, for the properties, the HUD properties, which really is a travesty to see this, the way this was done, the schedule in fact could be changed, and you were given an opportunity to make amends for the fact that these people for years had been trying to get this project going, and simply weren't guided, while another group was guiding themselves to all of the, even one of the grants, the RCAP grant that was mentioned, the other group has it already, was never mentioned to the group that they were supposedly working with. That kind of behavior is just not to be tolerated, and the effect of it on the people in the community that some of you are very close to is really a shame. And when we came and asked for those things to be seen and fixed, there was virtually no cooperation, even to the point of, these HUD grants that are pretty complicated, I asked to have them put on the website so that they could be understood. Even that was not accommodated. And it, we really need to see that low-income needs have very little to do with curbs, okay? And you need to look at all of you, all of you. You need to look in your hearts and look at how that money was being spent, and look at the needs in this community. And it was in fact a pastor from the community. Pastors have a special insight, who describe some of the things in the community that others may not be aware of. It wasn't the other folks, it was somebody who had a great deal of depth and insight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Okay, hearing none, we'll start with comments from commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's been some recent vandalism at Roslyn Park, so I invite all the residents of Roslyn who walk their dog and go through there, to keep your eyes open, and please inform the police if you see any graffiti or any other type of negative behavior. With respect to the community centers being discussed, the only community center that I would support would be an Abington Township Community Center that would be obviously open to everyone in the township, it would not have the appellation of any particular neighborhood. There's plenty of kids on the streets in Roslyn, too, who need release from any ennui that they may be suffering. With respect to the Speaker's comments regarding you, Mr. President, I think the Township and your ward are ably represented by you, and I think she was way off-base, and you've been re-elected, and perhaps it's sour grapes since she was the loser in a recent election, but, uh...
Commissioner Bowman, please.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick things, if any commissioner is interested in the winning performance from the OM team, I have a couple copies left here, now I have two. And last thing, when driving to Abington, please drive like the kids live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Yeah, thank you, President Luker, just a couple things. Number one, I wanna thank the chief and extend my thank you to a couple of the officers with whom I've been working recently for some issues going on in Glen Side, including our hand control officer, they've all been wonderful, and to pass the message along to the residents, they keep reminding me to remind people to lock doors, car doors, windows, everything. A lot of the break-ins are not actually break-ins, they're people leaving doors unlocked, and that's how people are getting in, so please lock everything. I wanna thank everybody at the Glen Side Fourth of July Parade, an amazing parade, once again, the people in charge of it, Bill Hall, June Parkinson, Jamie Pigott, the Cass family, Mrs. Cass with her children, you might have seen here with the Redeemer Garden, they also go out of their way with their kids, so they're passing on to the next generation. Commissioner Gillespie here, who has a greater insight to some of the work that goes in there, so just thank you to everybody involved with that. And then finally, I'm just, I'm always happy to be here at meetings, but tonight's a little bittersweet, 'cause we initiated an adult GYAC softball league, tonight was the first game, and I had to miss the game to be here for, for the meeting. So, best wishes to Team Three in the new GYAC softball league, hopefully I will not bring you down next week. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone that participated in the Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association Parade. I will say GGPA from now on. And it was a great day. We managed to do everything in between raindrops. We had the morning program, went great, some drizzle, then we had the parade, some drizzle, then we had the fireworks. Fantastic. Crowds were, it was amazing how many people were there. And a lot of the people sitting up here were also involved, so it was great. Thank you. Thank you for the Abington police and their help. Of course, Cheltenham helped us on their side, but we really appreciate all the efforts that went into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hacker.
Thank you, President Luker. I have to address what happened here this evening. I wasn't going to, but I am deeply concerned about some of the comments that were made here tonight. I heard words like "grieve" and "transparency." And I'll tell you, what grieves me and what is transparent here is that personal attacks are being wrapped up in the cloak of community betterment, and that needs to stop. Okay? There isn't anyone up on this board who is not sympathetic to the idea of a community center to benefit township children and township residents, myself included. There have been offers by Commissioner Markman and others to further the dialogue, and Van Struthers is one of the best in this business at what he does. Okay? So I'm going to caution all of you out there who are interested in this. Be careful who you let lead you, and make sure you are clear of the agenda behind the conversation. Your township will stand up for you. Your commissioner in Ward Five has stood up for you, and he will continue to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I want to start off, I would like to thank, I'd like to thank Larry Mateo and Code Enforcement, specifically for a community meeting that they had in the rain. It was not rain like we had this evening, but it was rain nonetheless. Came out to help out in the situation over in Ward Three, and I appreciate that greatly. I'd also like to make an announcement related to a Philly Police Car Food Drive. At this time of year, a lot of people don't think about donating food to various charities. We think about it at Thanksgiving, we think about it at various holidays, but in summer we typically don't. And there are still many people in the community who are in need. So there will be, on Saturday, July eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from nine AM to one PM, a Philly Police Car Food Drive sponsored by CAP, Abington Township Police Association, Abington Police Giant Foods. There are suggested donations. I'm sure we will send this around to commissioners. Commissioners will send it out. You can also go into the Giant, buy a prepackaged bag to give to Philly Police Cars. So we want to make sure that we are charitable in our deeds and actions. I'd also like to thank Ed Mikolow and his staff for several things that they've done over in Ward Three. Even at times when he was away, he would answer his phone, and I appreciate that. And specifically, I have a, an observation that I made, just walking around and walking my dog, different things. I've seen a number of people jogging or walking with earphones on. It is a dangerous endeavor for multiple reasons. It has caused several accidents. It's not just a crime issue. You can't hear cars, you can't hear barking dogs, you can't hear a number of things. I know those of us, I don't, those of you who enjoy running, may like to do so with earphones, but think about it on the next time. And just very quickly, I was not going to say anything either, but since I've been called out for my alma mater, I have to stand and answer the bell like my alma mater does. Dr. King led a civil rights movement. It was a movement about people. It was a movement that was not about him or his personal agenda. He did not pimp or benefit that movement, and many times, that is how, and I will say it, my people have been disenfranchised. We have to be smart, I agree with you, about who we follow and how we follow. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. And I'll just make one comment. I've been on the board for almost eight years, and I can't remember ever thinking to myself that I was, or ever thinking to myself to discriminate between one community or another community. And I'm personally offended that that's the impression that some of the speakers talked about today. On another note, I wanted, I promised a resident of mine that I would read a letter that was thanking an officer who did, who he was impressed with, so if you bear with me. I wanted to, dear Mr. Klein, I wanted to tell you how terrific Officer Wiley of the Abington Police Department was to me last week. This was several weeks ago. I went to the police station on Friday, June twelfth, because of a previous day, I had received a couple of phone calls that threatened me with various legal penalties if I did not do certain things. The calls were very troubling, not least because I knew I had not, had done nothing wrong, especially in Texas from whence the call apparently originated. Officer Wiley spoke to me at some length, taking details in my story and listening patiently to my concerns. He assured me that the calls were, were a scam and that I had nothing to worry about. He was unfailing, unfailingly kind, patient, and understanding. While I felt a bit of a fool, of a fool, he took me seriously and assured me that I had done the right thing by getting this checked out. In short, his treatment of me was extraordinarily professional. It was also warmly human. I cannot tell how, tell you how much I appreciate his handling of the situation. Please convey to the board and to Officer Wiley supervisor, supervisors, my appreciation for his treatment, and if there is any way in which he can be, can get a hearty pat on the back for his good work, please take care and make sure it happens. Perhaps some kind of well-done can be placed in his file. And I have communicated that to, to Lieutenant Malloy and Chief Kelly, and I think that's been taken care of, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you. That was two minutes, so right on.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Zappone.
Thank you, President Luker. I just want to thank our manager, Mike LaFever, our solicitors, Mike Clark, Lauren Gallagher, and also Mike Powers for participating in my annual Tyson Edge, Tyson Edge update, which was a few weeks ago. Very well-attended. And for all the hard work that the staff did, as well as our solicitors, in getting all the packages together and getting them out and making most of the people happy over there. So I want to thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Spiegel.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of important factual things. This Saturday, although it is not on your township calendar, there is a township paper-shredding event. I believe it is, Mr. Mikolow, nine to noon, am I correct? Nine to noon at the Public Works Yards on Florrie Lane, just turn, turn at the alley off Eastern Road. The EAC is also holding a food drive at this event, so bring peanut butter and jelly and other canned goods, non-perishables, and those will benefit the Abington Food Cupboard. Then next week, the EAC will be back on Florrie Lane, this time at the Public Safety Training Annex, to do a rain barrel, rain barrel workshop. And you can get discounted rain barrels and learn all about how rain barrels help on stormy nights like this, keep the storm water from shocking our storm sewer system. And then I just have a series of quick thanks. I have been lobbying property maintenance complaints and other things at the Code Enforcement Department, specifically at Director Mateo and also Mr. Salinek, and they have knocked every one of those right out of the park. Their work is much appreciated. I know Mr. Mikolow doesn't like to be complimented by name, so I'll just say that the director of Public Works is now a folk hero on Facebook. He's, he's a social media hero. Officer Freed took a call and helped me while he was on vacation. Manager LaFever helped me several times while he was in CIO, most, most appreciated. And Assistant Township Manager Waymeyer and also Mr. Jim Marshall have been working tirelessly on our very, very important Old York and Susquehanna project. And, and then finally, sort of along those lines, but broader than that, I would like to thank Community Development Director Struthers for his tireless work, not only on the, on that project, but on many, many others. He is a man of great integrity and drive and focus. And President Luker, I, a lot has been said about you in a lot of different directions, but I just want to thank you for your, not only your leadership of this board, but all the help that you have given me recently, and I will say your mentorship as well. So I just want to thank you personally for that. Oh, one more thing. Commissioner, Commissioner Farron, thanks for taking over Public Affairs last week. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two comments on the same topic, which is walkability. Wanted to thank everybody, several people in this room who came out, it seems like a long time ago, but last week, June thirtieth, for the walkability audit at the Noble Train Station area, hosted by the county. I think we have some good recommendations that are going to be compiled into a report, and we can chip away at some of those things over time to improve the pedestrian experience. And just wanted to let everybody know, related to that, you can still comment, not just for the Noble area, which you can do, but for the entire Montgomery County by going onto an interactive map if you have a specific area that you want to comment, identify a problem, or even identify something good. Probably the easiest way, because it's a long link, is just to Google Walk Monco, and the whole page with that effort will come up. So again, Google Walk Monco, one word, and you'll get a page where you can comment on an interactive map. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. When I first became a commissioner, I wondered why and how all of the HUD funding went into Ward Five. And I wondered how Ward Eight could get some of that, which it never did. So with that in mind, I would like to ask Manager LaFever if we could have for the next month's meeting an accounting of how much HUD funding has gone into Ward Five, because for some reason, those residents don't seem to know that, and maybe even a list of those projects. And I'm sure you can't go back to the beginning of time, but certainly, there's a, there's an accounting for many years.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luker, no one has worked on this board with you longer than I have. We have maintained a very long, friendly relationship. We come from different aisles of the pew, and you are on this board, and always have been, the fairest man I have ever known.
Thank you.
I really don't have any comments other than, you know, I think when people express themselves and they're trying to get something accomplished, I don't think the attack mode is the best way to go. I think, I think if you want to be constructive and you want to try to build something, don't attack other people. And I can tell you that Commissioner Luker has, has always done that, and he's always been a bridge builder and a consensus maker, and from when I was on the planning commission, you know, fifteen years ago, he was as well. So I echo the sentiments, and I think he's an excellent leader and commissioner, and, you know, there's, there's no reason to sling hatchets at people. If you want to build, build with blocks, don't chop it down with axes. So, you know, and, and one thing, if you want to bring the sentiment to the board and you want the board to act in a certain way, you, you do it with reasonableness and, and really planned thoughts, not, not just angry insults. Because frankly, I don't think anyone responds well to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Markman. Commissioner Schreiber.
Not sure there's anything else to be said, so no comment this evening.
Okay, nine sixteen, Michael. Just one, first of all, Commissioner Farron, thank you very much for a superb job of championing the Public Affairs meeting last month for Commissioner Spiegelman. Secondly, our legal staff, Michael Clark and Lauren Gallagher, I personally want to thank you for all your support and help and guidance that you've given to the board for the time you've been with us. And lastly, Margaret, I just wanted to thank you for your help with the VFW post thirty-three ninety-eight on Fourth of July reopened for the first time in about, what, three years?
I'm sorry, I want to hear your name.
How long has it been that the VFW has been closed? About three years?
Um, roughly.
Roughly.
About a year and a half.
About a year and a half, okay. But in any event, to make a long story short, it reopened Fourth of July for a brief hamburger and hot dog celebration. So under the leadership of retired Detective Sergeant Will Holt, I'm hoping for bigger